To our Nassau County Board of County Commission District Three Candidate Forum here from the Chamber of Commerce. Once again, my name is Sean McGill. I'm a member of the Chamber Board and also a member of the Government Affairs Committee. In the past, we've had a room full of smiling faces that have been staring at our candidates. Now, things are a little bit different. You might have seen some of our other posts where we had full video production, but as the situation has evolved, we found it best to go to Zoom calls. So our candidates now get to stare at each other and smile. As for those of you that have watched in the past, we'll start with the candidates introducing themselves to each, to us, and they'll have up to five minutes to do that. And then we'll start a question, round robin questions, where we will start each question with a new candidate, and I will choose based on alphabetical order of last name. So they'll have a minute and a half to answer those. And I'd like to introduce our candidates for District Three, Mr. Jeff Gray. Go ahead and raise your hand, Mr. Gray.
Good morning, everyone.
And Mr. Brent Lamont.
Good morning.
And we will go ahead and get started with your introduction, Mr. Gray.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Jeff Gray, your candidate for Nassau County Commissioner, District Three. I would like to thank everyone, and I would like to thank the Chamber for hosting this candidate forum this morning.
Why am I running as your county candidate for County Commissioner for District Three? My message is to be a voice for Nassau County citizens, to keep Nassau County a great place to work, live, and play. My wife Diana and I raised our family here in this beautiful county. Our youngest daughter Brooke, she graduated from Nassau County Uly High School, and she's now attending UNF, and she has the same passion as I do. She wants to become a dentist and come back and open her own practice in Nassau County to serve the residents of Nassau County. So I wish to preserve our beautiful culture here of this county. This is our forever home. We plan, we just built our forever home. We want to retire here in Nassau County. And I know everybody just loves this beautiful place. I have a plan to diversify our tax base because I know we got a very important issue, and it's to provide our homeowners property tax relief. So I have a plan now, and I want to go over a little bit of that with you, with everyone. Recently, we had five Amazon Logistics Centers and a Wayfair Distribution Center located in our neighbor in Duval County. Those new locations of employment provided good paying jobs for those citizens. Our Nassau County Economic Board Committee did nothing to attract those jobs to Nassau County. These are the type jobs we got to have in Nassau County to provide property tax release and diversification of our tax base. It was then that I decided actions need to be taken now for the future of Nassau County residents and diverse our county's tax base. So my plan now is to review the Economic Board's committee's visions, goals, and objectives, and to make the necessary changes necessary. My plan is to attract low-impact, low-medium industries, parts logistical distribution centers, and even to include corporate office centers to locate in Nassau County to provide good, high-paying wage jobs. This will help our property tax diversification and provide our homeowners tax, property tax relief. Jobs are also needed for our children who graduate in our local schools. They are our future. I don't want my children to move away from my families, and neither do y'all. We don't want them to have to move out of different county or different state looking for a good place of employment. Nassau County is a place that we can do it right here, provide our children jobs. Now, I would like to speak about one thing, growth. Growth is inevitable. Florida for the last five years is the fastest and growing population state in the nation based on the US Census data. We need my plan now, and transparent, smart growth is what we need now. We need to attract the right type of industries in here for growth. Rooftop homes, they don't pay for all the required levels that's required under Nassau County Comprehensive Plan. The levels of services that they pay, it just doesn't quite pay enough for everything that we need to accomplish. So Nassau County has got to transition from a rural county to an urban county while protecting our culture and our beautiful way of life, but we also got to move into the 21st century, into 2020s ahead of us. So we've got challenges, and we've got opportunities. We need to make the best of those opportunities. I want to say I do not support a tax increase. I feel impact mobility fees must pay for all new growth, all new growth, not existing homeowners' tax increases. I want to speak a little bit about my professional qualifications for this job. I'm a very successful business manager, and I possess the ability to build business relationships in our business community and around the globe. I've been employed for 33 years with AB Volvo Mack Trucks Corporation. We're a highly profitable corporation, 48th largest global corporation in the world. We service and sell transport solutions to 62 countries around the world. I have the ability to efficiently plan, budget, and execute a successful business. You know, government needs to operate like a business. I believe there needs to be results-driven actions. You've got to provide results, and you must have expectations. Those are requirements in a business, and government needs to be the same as well. So also on my professional background, I've been on Nassau County Code Enforcement Board under Commissioner Johnson, and I currently serve on the Nassau County Economic Planning Opportunity Board for both terms as an agent under Commissioner Edwards. So my successful qualifications for this job are extensive, and I'm here to help Nassau County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Lamont, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, I'm Brent Lamont, and many people may already know me as the school district's Director of Career Education. That's same as vocational for people that maybe haven't heard the name changes, but we've had a lot of impact here in Nassau County. And if you're not familiar with it, I encourage you to look that up. We've added over 10 new programs in the last eight years. Our students earn more credentials per capita than any other district in the region. We're actually number one in the region there, so we're very happy about that. And we brought over $2.5 million of performance revenue to the district for those credentials. So I'm very proud of that, and I don't say that because that has anything to do with being a county commissioner. It does not. That's just a statement of my impact that I've had, and I think it shows that I take my job seriously, and I'm going to perform. A little bit about me personally, I first came to Nassau County in the same position in 2006. My wife and I live in Uly with our three children, Robert, who is a, will be a sophomore at Uly High School, Elizabeth will be in seventh grade at the middle school, and our son Benjamin, who's three years old. So we have a huge stake in Nassau County. We want it to be a great place for our family. We want to make it a lot better. Again, we chose the community because it's a great community, but we're aware of some of the challenges, and I think I can make a difference there. So let me tell you a little bit about why I'm running. As the school district's career ed director, I am the Chair of the Workforce Development Committee for the Nassau County Economic Development Board. And in doing that, I've become more and more involved and seen some of the things that are going on in our county, and I believe we're selling out to residential developers. An example, when people ask me, well, you know, what would motivate you to seek office? Well, here's the story. A few years ago, a group came to the Economic Development Board and asked us to write a letter of support to build townhomes along a railroad. And we said, no, this is, that's absurd, and we're for property rights, but you don't have the right to buy cheap land that's zoned industrial and get a zoning change so you can make a lot of money and put that expense on to the taxpayers. So we said no to this, and of course, this is ultimately a decision of the Planning and Zoning Board, which my opponent sits on. And we said no, we told our director, find us an industrial buyer because the property owner does have a right, you know, to have a marketable property. And she did. She was bringing a data center. We had, we had a company that wanted to put a data center there, and you may think, well, why would you put a data center along a railroad? Well, those fiber cables run along the railroad, so it's actually a great site. And by doing that, we would have had over $250,000 of annual tax revenue to the county. We'd have brought 25 to 30 high-paying jobs. And in the midst of all of that, we had very little footprint, very little impact for something like that. So it was a great thing. And as she was getting ready to negotiate a contract and help the buyer meet the seller, this zoning change showed up on the agenda for the Planning and Zoning Board. Well, we had charged her to find this buyer, so we're going to back her up. We started making phone calls to Planning and Zoning Board members to say, hey, what are you doing? This is, this is exactly what we do not need. And then we got a call back from Laura Di Bella, our director. She said that a county official had contacted her and told her that if we don't stand down, Economic Development Board was going to lose its funding. Now, is that the way you want to do business in Nassau County? And guess what's going there right now? If you drive down Harts Road, you'll see a huge clearing, all the trees are gone, and they're starting those townhomes. That will raise your property taxes. So this will be a choice of who is best to lower taxes and provide better services to the county. We have had development run amok, and that is the result of horrendous zoning changes over the past eight years by our Planning and Zoning Board. My opponent refers to that board as the Planning and Economic Opportunity Board. If you go to the county's website right now, and I'm sure they'll probably rush to change it, there's no such thing as a Planning and Economic Opportunity Board. The only economic opportunity they provide is for residential home builders, and that's who's funding their campaigns. So look at that, go to the Supervisor of Elections website and see who's funding these, these candidates. My plan for Nassau County focuses on the Crawford Diamond. I believe that that is a great opportunity where we can bring those manufacturers that diversify the tax base. But did you know that we had a $17 million grant for the county?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Lamont. That's been, that's your five minutes. I appreciate it.
I see the meaning, I'm sorry.
Yep, you got it, no worries.
All right.
I know this is tough, and I appreciate both you guys and working with us here. And, and I'll tell you what, we're gonna go ahead, since you guys have both touched on it, and we'll be starting with Mr. Gray. How do you believe we should balance business growth in the county with residential growth?
Well, Sean, I want to first get a rebuttal to his, and I'll answer your question. No, I have no history of ownership. The planning board members of land, when it's presented to us on the Planning and Economic Opportunity Board, staff presents the facts, and we vote on the facts. I don't have no history who owns what property, what was prior, and all that mumbo jumbo. And no call was ever made to me personally. So to answer your question, Sean, thank you. Nassau County is a rural county and is still qualified under USDA Rural County US Department of Agriculture, but we're transitioning to an urban county. So as we transition, some of the land uses, like OR, open rural, we basically put those as like a holding pattern, and we look at the best opportunity to classify that land use. We, I, me, I voted for Crawford Diamond Industrial to designate that as an industrial business park. My professional business leadership in my corporation was, we were looking to come into Nassau County and providing hundreds, maybe thousands of jobs. If we put a engine manufacturer here, we spare off, spin off water pump manufacturer, alternate manufacturers, wiring harness manufacturers to create jobs, but at that time, we didn't have no zoning that was available. We had to go to Duval. But it's very important that we transition from rural to urban and do that in a manner that includes commercial, low-impact, low-environmental, no-heavy-use industrial, if we can help it, and residential. So it's going to be a mix. It's challenges and opportunities. We got to balance them. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Lamont.
Well, would you consider a data center, light industrial, commercial, commercial use?
There's a lot of light industrial, low-impact, there's a lot of low-impact industrial, commercial applications we can attract here, yes.
Okay, so a data center would have been a good thing to bring.
Corporate centers, warehouse distributions, assembly operations, we can bring in a vehicle assembly injury. Volvo Pentahighboard Marine Engines is looking for a place in the southeast now because Atlantic and the Gulf is a big market share for us. If we put a place in-
Are you aware that we had a $4 billion solar panel manufacturer that wanted to come to the Crawford Diamond, and our county said no?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay, guys, let me interject for a second here. While I love this discussion, we do treat these more, as we call it a forum, versus a true debate. So maybe refrain from asking each other questions and just expound on, on your own answers there. So I'll, I'll, I'll let Mr. Lamont pick back up.
Okay, and can you go back to the question, the original?
Sure, absolutely. How do you believe we should balance business growth in the county with residential growth?
Well, the first thing is, we, the impact fees need to be a requisite level that pays for the infrastructure. They have not been. I am encouraged that it, it looks like we're starting to catch up there, but we need to make sure we're on top of that. Those impact fees are at a maximum so that growth pays for itself. But I think also, we need to quit allowing zoning changes to residential, at least until we have our industrial base and diversify this tax base again. If you think about it in terms of, you know, where the money's coming from, you had a couple major mills on the island that bring in a lot of tax revenue, and that extra revenue is split between all of the houses. So as you start adding more and more residents, you're diluting that buying power. And we've, we have just done that to a point that it were way out of balance. So again, I just, I come back to all of the zoning change, all of the developments that have been approved by the Planning and Zoning Board, and I think that a lot of those did not have to happen. There are certain developers that seem to get favoritism there. Okay. I saw your warning for the times.
Okay. Are you finished, or? Okay, good, all right. And, and thank you guys both. I'm loving this discussion, and, and for any folks that have watched our other Board of County Commission forums first, I've, because of this great discussion, I'm changing the order of questions, but just so that everybody knows, you will all be getting the same questions that, that your other candidates had, but I like the flow of this conversation. And, and so with that, we will be going to, now, I'm confused. Mr. Lamont, you're starting this question, and are there things the county is doing well or can do better to foster responsible economic growth?
Well, I, a lot of it comes back to these same issues, but I've already mentioned, I think they are doing well in terms of adding or adjusting the impact fees. I, I think what they can do better is very simply, just end the cronyism. You know, we pretty well known that our sitting commissioner owns a lumber company and is a supplier to the home building industry. So if you wonder why the home building is, is what's taken over, well, there's incentive there that shouldn't be there. So I think transparency matters. I think that if our commissioners are not meeting through text messages and at a commissioner's house, and everything is there in chambers, it makes it a lot harder for that stuff to go on, and I think transparency will govern and make sure that those, those decisions are made the way they need to be, zoning changes are not allowed based on who people are.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Lamont. Mr. Gray?
Sean, would you repeat the question for me, please?
Absolutely. Are there things the county is doing well or could do better to foster responsible economic growth in the county?
Okay, so doing well, I would say-
We're doing very well, working with private and government, promoting private-public-government cooperation and sponsorships of projects. You know, my wife loves going to Kohl's and shop and Publix and the Milliday Villages as a fine example of a private-public partnership. David Hallman Boulevard being paved behind the shopping center, provide an alternate traffic route for our citizens to travel along. That's what we need, cooperation between public and private partnerships. I think that's a win-win. What we can do new in the future, oh, and also partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce has been working hard for small business in Nassau County, and, you know, working with local government. That, that relationship is, I think, was 1 million, now it's going up to 2.2 million, and there's relief, and that, that cooperation, working together is what's getting money out of small business, and I want to thank y'all. But do, I do agree that the, the impact fees must be visited on a regular basis, and also there's this, something more than an impact fee. It's impact and mobility, transportation, our roadway system. You know, that funding has to be upfront and paid for with new development for Nassau County. So it's impact and mobility fees, adjustment and staying current with those fees. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. And you're, you're still in the hot seat now, but we are going to shift our discussion a little bit away from economic development right now. To tell me, in, in your opinion, what is the single most important characteristic a person must have to be successful as a county commissioner?
You've got to have successful business experience, okay? You're not going to get a job, my dad always told me from a poor man. You got to have small business, and you got to have experience and leadership skills to run that business. You need to be effective in budgeting, planning, and executing. There must be expectations. If you don't have expectations, me, me personally, I have a personal business plan. In my personal business plan, PVP, I do about, I go by my KPIs. And those KPIs are key performance indicators. And what I do is I track how far I'm doing each week, each month, rollout week 12, 13, 14, 15. I'm meeting my key performance indicators on my personal business plan, and I'm achieving results. That's what I got to do. If I don't, I get a working group together and our team, and we get it, we get where we need to be. And that's the way local government's got to be. Local government has got to have that type of leadership that we can execute and deliver results. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Lamont.
Well, I think the most important responsibility that our board has is oversight and approving our county budget, which is around $250 million now. And I think that one thing that would be very good for our board is if we had some people with a true requisite level of financial management experience. I have a Master's of Business Administration degree from the University of, from Mercer University, as well as a Business Administration degree from the University of North Florida. I, I believe that the overall education of our commissioners is lacking. I believe we have one current board member that has a college degree, and perhaps that's why there's so much waste in our budget and such poor asset allocation. But I believe that, you know, what also I offer is a proven track record. I have worked, had my own business since I was 13 years old. I had a law in service, started that, did a little retail, and then moved into various things through, through college, and have been in education for a while, but I believe my track record for the school district speaks for itself. When I returned to the district in 2012, we had somewhere around 200 industry credentials had been earned that previous year, and our students are knocking it out of the park now between 1,000 and 2,000 every year. That's a metric that is easy to, to look up, it's verifiable, and that's been our mission. We've brought in a lot of revenue, and, and that's the ability to see where are grants, where can we get money, and how can we best apply that to grow what we do. So I'm running on my track record. I think it's a very solid track record, and past, past performance is your best indicator of future performance.
Thank you, Mr. Lamont, and, and you're still in the hot seat now. And, and you guys have, have both touched on this, so I think this is a very appropriate, if you want to call it a follow-up question. As a commissioner, how would you handle a conflict between a staff recommendation for a course of action versus what you're hearing from your constituents? And maybe tell me a little bit about how you'd work through that process.
Well, I would get the facts. I think as you, I would probably not even need constituents to tell me there is a concern because I'm going to read everything before I vote on it, and I'm going to approach it with a very analytical process and just ask the tough questions, playing devil's advocate myself. That's what I do, and that's how I've uncovered a lot of things that are troubling with our county at this point. So, you know, you have to take the time to do that fact-finding, and you have to ask the tough questions. I believe that is one of the shortcomings of our current board. I, I've seen how Mr. Mullen will make presentations, and they're convincing, and if, if people don't know enough to ask that tough question and stump, then things go through. And I think, I think there have been instances where staff have recommended some very, very bad things for our county.
Thank you, Mr. Lamont. Mr. Gray?
Okay, Sean, here we go again. Give me that, give me that question.
You got it, absolutely. This is a long one, too. As a commissioner, how would you handle a conflict between a staff recommendation for a course of action versus what you're hearing from your constituents? And tell me how you'd kind of work through that process for yourself.
Okay, great, great, thank you, Sean. I will look at the facts presented before me and how it affects our communities. If it had an adverse effect on our communities, I would weigh that consideration. However, I would have to base my decision on credible evidence. We take decisions in the case at the county now, of my many years of working, over a decade with the county volunteering for our residents here, we have to make a decision based on credible and factual evidence, so we don't want the county to get in any trouble with anything. Also, I would also look at rate, way the resident's concerned in the community. I might even do an outreach program, an outreach program in the community, just to find out and gather some more information. And how does it comply with our Nassau County's Comprehensive Plan, you know, before I make a decision? And what's something that's real important is, does it comply, or is it the residents' and citizens' wishes to comply with the county's Vision 2032 plan? Is it something that we have in a long-range plan that the residents want? So I look, base a lot of that information that I gather, you know, to, before I made a decision. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. And stay right there, you're not going anywhere this time. And, and obviously, we're, we're, we're looking at each other through computer screens instead of face-to-face, and we've had to adjust because of the, the current COVID pandemic, and obviously it's brought many businesses to the breaking point. What would you do to ensure the continued survivability of as many small businesses as possible?
Well, you know, that's a big challenge as, as your next county commissioner, you want to lead to elect a leader that has experience in running a business, a successful business going forward during this pandemic. COVID-19 has been truly devastating to our nation and our county. Revenue's down about 40% is what I'm guessing right now, from what I'm hearing. I think we got to really try to reach out and work with the chamber. I think the county's on the right approach, trying to work with the state and trying to document they hired Computed, CSG Corporation. I'm trying to think of the name of Services Group, County Services Group Corporation, I believe. And what they're trying to do is the expenditures that they spend, they're going to help document those for small business, to help small business, so we can get reimbursed by the county, which gets reimbursed ultimately by the state. So there's a lot going on, it's truly a challenging time. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Lamont, and do you need me to reread the question for you?
No, I, how do businesses recover, and how are we going to help? Is that?
That's it.
Yep. So I believe in free enterprise, and I think that government usually harms small business a lot more than it helps them. And I, I've spoke to many small business owners throughout this campaign that feel like their ear, they do not have their commissioner's ears, and they, they feel like some of the decisions have impacted them negatively. So, you know, generally, as a business, their best way out of this, they know what they need to do, and we need to get out of their way or help clear a path if we can. And so one of the things that I've spoken with, with businesses about is in government purchasing for the county, can we work out something that gives a local preference to our small businesses? I think that's a small step, but I think that's Nassau County government investing back in the community, and then let those private sector companies solve the problems and get out of their way and let them do it. You know, that's what made America great, and that's what we need to keep doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamont. Okay, take a breath, guys, you're on the home stretch. This one should come as no surprise to you since this is a Chamber of Commerce forum. And, and for Mr. Lamont, what is your opinion of the role of the Chamber of Commerce in interacting with the Board of County Commissioners?
You are a conduit. The Chamber is a conduit for all of the businesses. As I go out and try to meet with everybody, and it's, it's constant, you know, phone calls and, and sitting down with people, if all 80,000 of our, or 85,000 of our residents had a voice and we had to talk to them individually, we'd still be meeting before- we'd still be meeting before, you know, there'd be three county commission meetings before we had a chance to talk to everybody. So with all of our businesses, I think the chamber is that conduit where you represent a broader group of people and concise, you know, condense that argument so that we can, you know, talk to the substantive issues that impact the most businesses as well. Still have to have that individual outreach, but I look for the chamber as that leadership, you know, helping businesses mentoring other businesses. And, you know, that conduit to us. If that, that answered your question?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Lamond. Mr. Gray?
Sean, I believe that Allen Chamber is an asset assisting our small businesses here in Nassau County, especially during this pandemic. I, I can't thank you and President Regina Duncan enough and Alex for all the work that y'all have done out there, helping our, our small businesses. But the chamber is a, is a very valuable asset, Allen Chamber, providing guidance for our small businesses to work with government, providing leadership and connectivity and communicating with our government. So it's a, it's a partnership. It's a partnership, and I want to thank y'all. And I think it's very important that you continue doing what you do, and right now, especially during this pandemic and these times.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Okay, final question. And because it's our last question, I give you guys each two minutes to answer. And, and it's, it's simply this. Why are you the best candidate for this position?
Who's up first?
That's you, Mr. Gray.
Okay. Why am I the best candidate for your Nassau County Commissioner for District Three? It's very simple. I'm the most qualified and I'm the most successful. I run businesses in other states as well, personal businesses. I grew up in South Carolina cropping tobacco in the fields, lived in a mobile home. Now I'm a multimillionaire. I'm very successful. I work hard. And I want to see everyone succeed and have the opportunity in this county to succeed. I've got great business leadership experience, over a decade of years of volunteering for our county government. I've also get out and reach out to the community. I'm not just involved when it's election time. I'm a member of Nassau County Prayer Business Leaders Club. I was a volunteer with a little league coach and umpire in our community at Yuli. I'm a member of Nassau County Republican Executive Committee. I'm a member of Nassau County Brasco Community Club. I'm a member of Nassau County West Side Republicans Club. I stretch out all across this community, from the island to the west side to the south side. One thing that I'm real proud of is I'm a volunteer with the Barnabas Center, offering crisis assistance and feed our citizens all across Nassau County. You're not going to find me sitting behind a desk all the time. I'm sure we've got some leadership, business issues we got to sit behind a desk and take care of. But you got to get out there and talk with the people, and I'm your county commissioner, and that's the kind of person I am. I feel that I, my experience, professional and community and serving volunteers in, in local government make me clearly the choice as your candidate commissioner for Nassau County District Three. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Lamond, tell us why you're the best candidate for this position?
Well, this is normally where people kind of give their bullet part, points, and everybody's been receiving cards in the mail now with bullet points from candidates and why they're great. So, you know, what I'll say to that is to people, please do your homework. The bullet points that people give you on those cards and the bullet points that they tell you in these stump speeches are what they think's going to impress you and what they think you want to hear. But with a little bit of research, you can find out that maybe being a, a leader of a company is really just being a sales manager at one spot. And you can, you can vet people's education, you can vet their impact, you can vet what they've really done. So I stand, on my record with the school district of performance, we've been extremely effective. And that can easily be looked up on DOE sites, or if you just look at some past newspaper articles. I stand on my education. I am proud that I've been a lifelong learner and I've continued to advance my education. And I believe that's going to give you the financial oversight that you need. And then I just say, ask people that know us both and people that have worked for me and ask them, you know, how is Brent to work with? Does, does, does he provide good leadership and does he help you get things done? And I think you're going to get very positive answers there. I think if you do your homework and do the compare and contrast, there's a very clear choice for your candidate for Nassau County Commissioner, District Three. And I think it's me. Think Nassau.
Thank you, Mr. Lamond, and I'd like to thank both our candidates, Mr. Jeff Gray and Mr. Brent Lamond, for participating in this forum. Obviously, anyone that, that runs for public office cares about people and wants to serve people. And it's hard to do that when you're sitting behind a computer screen in a, a format like this. So, so I really want to thank you guys and thank everyone watching and taking the time to learn more about our candidates. You can also go to the chamber's website, nassaucountyflchamber.com. Once again, nassaucountyflchamber.com, where these videos, videos of our other candidates, as well as candidate questionnaires that have been completed to do your research there. If you haven't watched already, we have our Supervisor of Elections, our Superintendent of Schools forums on the website, as well as our now our Board of County Commission. And next week, we'll have our school board. Later this summer, we'll have our, our municipal elections. And until then, hopefully, everybody does their research. Stay safe, stay healthy, and we'll see you next time.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, guys.